All right, welcome everybody. Let's call an order, the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Community High School District 128 to order. If I could ask everyone to stand, please recite the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
All right, good evening and welcome back, everybody. That was a very quick summer. Okay, let's go, roll call, please, first.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Don Carmichael. Pat Gruddy.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, so we know Don Carmichael out this evening, right? Okay. All right, so tonight, we will have a public hearing on the e-learning plan, which I expect will be relatively brief. We'll open it up for public comment. We'll have updates from our new school board reps, which we want to welcome and look forward to what, well, they're not all, I should say. Okay, there's one veteran in the midst. Then we'll have the superintendent's report, some good news there. We will approve the consent vote agenda, which we reviewed earlier in the month. Then we'll have brief updates from Facilities and Finance, Program and Personnel. And C-ville? Nothing? Okay, IASB?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we will have a brief executive session tonight, and other than to return to open session, there's no action being taken tonight.
Right.
Okay. All right, any questions before we start? All right, so, Dr. Lee, we had some good news today.
Well, Dr. Gruddy, we did have some good news, and I, you know, a picture always tells a story, so we have a little video here, I think, that will really kind of tell a story.
Today, we are here at Libertyville High School at our new pool. It's about 4:15, together with our divers, who will be having their first practice at Libertyville High School, together with our swimmers. It's an exciting day, exciting time. I'd like to have a couple of the girls talk about what it means to have diving practice together with the swimmers, all at the same time.
So, we're all really happy, because for the last fifteen years, we've been diving at Vernon Hills, and we finally get to come to our own school and dive here, and at the same time, we get to dive every day with the swimmers, which we didn't get the chance to do before. So, it just helps us, like, bond more with the team.
Yeah. And I also think that's really exciting, because it connects us more with the community of Libertyville High School as a whole.
Seven divers stand on the pool deck.
Go Wildcats!
The LHS swim and dive teams jump into the water.
Awesome.
So, the dive-in actually occurred at 4:30 this afternoon. The pool is open.
Yes.
There'll be some punchless stuff that needs to be done for the next, you know, six to eight weeks, just to finish up, but we have all of the approvals from IDPH and our occupancy permit from the Regional Office of Education, and yes, indeed, go Wildcats and go Cougars when they are using the pool as well. Awesome. So, thanks to everyone for their assistance and support. We will have a grand opening ribbon cutting and open house at a date to be determined now, now that we're in the pool. So, we'll be setting that up, and we want to invite certainly village officials, former board members as well, and other key people that worked with us on this, on the community. And thanks to the current board as well for your assistance and support. This is the first of five total legs in construction, so we have four more to go. None of them are as complex as a swimming pool. I can assure you, I've learned more about pools from Mark and the team, but I do want us to stop and give Mark a big round of applause tonight, because he has done an incredible job.
The camera pans to Mark Copmenty, 128 Director of Facilities.
You know, way beyond what kind of a regular buildings and ground director would do, he's done a phenomenal job of everything, so. Mark, thank you, and I think maybe you and I will actually get a night's sleep tonight, which is a good thing, okay?
I hope so.
All right, we're really excited. So, Pat, we'll turn it over to you.
And I think we want to thank everybody, so, now, Brian, you had a big role in that, probably everybody, and Dan, you've had a big role in it, and once I start naming names, I'm going to get dr. with her. But really, I think everybody in the administrative team had a big role in it. I'd also like to thank the team from Gilbane, who I think has done a really great job, and all the community members that really, I think, spearheaded this. It's probably five years ago now, four, five years.
Oh, five years, yeah.
At least. And just all the hard work that the people in the community did, really, to bring this forward, to do the studies, that really helped us to design the pool that is right for LHS, okay? And I look forward to having, you know, everybody having a chance to see it. It's a remarkable facility, and I think it's a great addition to the community. So, thank you to everybody that have played a role. All right, let's declare the hearing open on the e-learning plan, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. The State of Illinois has passed legislation that updates provisions allowing Illinois schools to use e-learning with students to replace emergency days. And in response to that legislation, we've developed a plan that addresses the criteria that are required. So, in your packet, you saw the outline of the D-128 e-learning plan, and I'd just like to review the major responses of our team to those legislative criteria, and then we'll open the floor for public comment on the plan. So, the district offered last year, during the period when there was very limited legislation governing how we would implement an e-learning day, we offered an e-learning day because we had used more than the number of emergency days that are already built into our calendar. So, we build a calendar that includes some emergency days that we don't have to make up at the end of the year. It is our intent with this e-learning day plan to use those emergency days first, which we would call an e-learning day, as we've done in the past. But because we had the opportunity to pilot a day last year, we learned from surveys of the community and our staff that the components that we built into this plan adequately addressed the needs of students and families in terms of the ease of access to complete attendance on the day of the e-learning plan. We will send students an email that gives them the opportunity to verify their attendance on the e-learning day through a Google form that will also guarantee a five-hour replication of learning on this e-learning day that is required by the new legislation. We will also provide via district email, e-learning assignments from each teacher that align to the current course curriculum, that extend learning, that provide opportunities for practice, and that would take the students no more than thirty-five to forty minutes per academic class period on that e-learning day. Obviously, they wouldn't receive something for lunch or study calls. So, five hours of attendance would be verified in that way, and the process is relatively smooth, because it uses existing ways that we communicate with students. Through, teachers will have the opportunity to communicate through Google Classroom, if they're using Google Classroom, or through other methods that they will develop in advance of the e-learning day and communicate to students. On the e-learning day itself, they will email students with the exact assignment that is expected that day. So, the criteria also include that students have equal access to the electronic communications and activities. That's one thing as a district that we've done since we implemented our digital learning strategy, that we do know whether families have Internet access, and those that don't are offered the opportunity to use district-provided hotspots, so that all of our students have access to electronic communication on e-learning day. So, that's how we address that criteria. The legislation also requires training of staff, which we, again, because of our new calendar, have built-in mornings where staff is here earlier than students are, so we have some days that we can provide that training to all staff before we would use an e-learning day. The plan itself has been communicated to representatives of our union. That's another requirement of the legislation, is that we work with our unit to implement the plan. They've seen the framework of our plan, and we have agreed with them that once the plan is presented to you, to have the resolution approving the plan, and then it is sent to the Regional Office of Education and is approved by them, we will work with our staff to further develop the protocols, the training, and the communication of our e-learning plan, both to staff and to students and parents. I mentioned that we did the pilot last year, and we implemented a survey afterwards to our staff and to parents, and over ninety percent of respondents to both surveys indicated that they were satisfied with the way that the e-learning day was carried out. There were questions dealing with meaningful assignments and with communication. Those also, vast majority of respondents said went well, but we'll use the specific feedback from those surveys to develop the protocols once this e-learning plan is approved by you and by the Regional Office of Education. So, we feel like through this plan, we've really addressed all the new criteria, and we've done it in a way that should be pretty seamless for our students and our staff, because it is built on existing practices and protocols that we have in place. So, that's an overview of the plan. We can open, we can, I can answer your questions about the plan, and then we can open the hearing for public comments as well.
Board member Lisa Hassel.
Can you remind us how many people responded to the survey after the initial e-learning day?
Yeah, thank you. We had four hundred community members respond, parents and community members, four hundred responses, and a hundred and fifty staff members responded to the survey. And of the staff members who responded, ninety-seven percent said it met their needs, and ninety-one percent of the parents and community members who responded said it met their needs. So, we put that together relatively quickly last year as a response to the added emergency days, and given the time that we had to create that and the successful implementation of it, we feel like anything that we do that is in response to this plan will be even better received than what we've done in the past, because we'll have a little more time to develop the protocols and the communication.
Board member Karen Lundstedt.
I was wondering, do you ever foresee using it on everyone, every emergency day, even if, you know, even if we haven't run, you know, we kind of think, well, why not, you know, but.
Sure. I think, well, I think the agreement with our team that developed this framework and through our communication with the union too, is that while that may be something that we do in the future, for this first year of rollout, we'll develop the protocols and wait to see whether that's needed. We currently have two emergency days that are built in, and sometimes we have three or more, so the likelihood that we could use up those two is probably great, given our weather in recent years. So, that is our current plan, but yes, I think that certainly we can discuss doing this every time that we call an emergency day.
And you'd mentioned something, I mean, obviously, there's the unknown of if there's a power outage, yes, kind of throws everything a little bit, but, you know, I'm sure there's kind of weird that out.
Yes, so we did also build into the plan the notion that if something disrupts the components of the plan, either students receiving emails or power outages that prevent staff from being able to convey information, that we simply would, you know, do a do-over when students get back to school.
Board President Pat Gruddy.
I just have two practical questions. One is the ad station form that the students spend, what, five or six hours doing their work? Realistically, well, one, how is that actually going to handle? So, they're going to fill out the form and send it in, and now what?
So, we did also include in this plan, which we hadn't done with the pilot last year, five hours of time in which teachers are monitoring and responding to student questions and email. Their assignments will replicate that amount of time that students will require to complete assignments. So, it will be a Google form that students verify that they are in attendance, they check their assignments, and then the completion of those assignments will provide evidence that they spent the five hours of clock time.
Yeah, and it gets, that was really my question.
Yeah.
Is a form like that required for what the state's requiring us to do? Because otherwise, it looks to me like a lot of work, because every student out there is going to just sign a form, so they did five or six hours.
We are required to verify student attendance, and that, to us, is the most expedient way to do it, because it's just a quick yes or no on a form that they're submitting to us.
And is there some automated roll-up that says, here's the ten people that didn't sign the form, or is somebody going to be back there checking?
No, since it's a Google form, it can connect to our student information system, and it was very easy to verify the students who had registered attendance last year and those who had not.
Okay.
And then we follow up with those who have not, and give them an opportunity to let us know why they didn't. Were they truly absent, or was there something, did something go awry with the form?
All right, and then the last question really was, you know, practically speaking, I mean, it's usually eight-thirty, nine o'clock, ten o'clock at night till we make a decision to close school, right? Or do teachers have, like, a lesson plan in already that they can communicate by nine o'clock that says, well, we were going to do this in class today, but, you know, here's what you got to do at home, and it's really just an hour and a half pushing it out?
Yeah, we're going to work with our educators to talk about, do we have some standard format of, if this emergency day were called, how would I take what I was presently doing and turn that into an e-learning day experience? Or what would be my alternative that I already have prepared that I could share on the day of, so they're not scrambling to prepare something?
Yeah, that's.
That'll be part of our training and communication, and we'll ask educators to help us develop that part as well.
Okay, great. All right, any comments?
I liked it last year.
Thank you.
Okay.
It was better for you than adding a day on to the end of the year to make up?
Sure.
It didn't interfere with your snow day fun?
Okay.
That's why we're building in this, too.
Well, they can do it five or six hours from eight to one in the morning. How long does it start so late?
We thought it was important to include that teacher contact time in a given timeframe, so that students who knew they might want help and support from their teachers would know that, you know, they were kind of bound by that period.
Yeah, sure.
To be able to access their teachers if they needed to, so if they did choose to go out and sled and do their work later, they might not have the same support, but.
Yeah, good. Okay, anything else from your side?
Something from you.
Okay, otherwise, I'll just ask, is there anybody in the public who would like to comment?
I'll say something. My name is Katie Tellerico, I'm a pediatrician, and I'll just say this makes me really sad.
Can you, can you go up to the microphone?
Yeah.
And just introduce yourself again?
Sure.
So, the audience, on tape, can hear you.
Right here.
Right over there.
Oh, thanks.
Find the podium.
Hi, my name is Katie Tellerico, I'm a pediatrician, and I just want to say this makes me sad, what's happening, because it's all over the pediatric literature that kids learn best via traditional means, so textbooks, notebooks, writing notes rather than typing things. And I know just maybe one day of e-learning isn't going to make or break their education, but to me, I'm just worried about the trend it's setting up, and it's just not in the best interest of our kids to do e-learning. I think it's convenient for parents who might have vacations scheduled, but as far as the child's education, it's not what's best for them. So, I'm not really happy about it. I'm surprised, I'm not surprised that so many staff are, because it's, you know, nice for them to not have to extend the school year into the summer, but I'm a little surprised by parents, and my guess is they're just not aware that the traditional means of education are so much more beneficial for our children.
And then, look, to be clear, I think we're talking about maybe a day now and then. We're not talking about.
Right. And I don't think, I don't think one day is a big deal, but like you were saying, why not do this for all the weather-related days that are canceled? And so, you know, you can just see what's going to happen in the future, and it's disappointing to me.
Well, I understand.
The weather, I mean, otherwise, it would be a day of nothing, you know, like, so, yeah.
Well, right.
Because they don't make, those days never get made up, so.
Yeah, I think they should be made up, personally.
But, so that was my point, like, could we maybe look into.
So, why aren't they made up?
So, again, to be, to be clear on that, so.
Yeah, I could clarify a couple of details that you addressed in your comments. First of all, we include in our calendar a greater number of days than the State of Illinois requires, and so, the number of days that are greater than the hundred and seventy-six student attendance days that the State of Illinois requires, we don't have to make up. But once we get to, if we take this day, we'll only have a hundred and seventy-five days of student attendance, like all, most other districts in our area, take their time to the end of the school year instead of building them into the calendar. And then, your other comment, I agree, if all students did with e-learning, that, you know, that wouldn't be the variety of experiences that we want them to have. And so, if educators choose to set up on their e-learning day where students are taking notes from their textbook, they certainly could do that, and they don't have to provide any electronic evidence of that. It's just the assignment that our teachers provide. So, I, we've heard your message, and we understand that all of the assignments that students do on this make-up day should align with what they're already doing in classroom, and could take the form of reading the book that they're already reading or taking the notes that they're already taking.
And I would just add, Katie, first of all, thanks for coming, okay? Because I know, I think, you've emailed me in the past, and we've gone back and forth a couple of times, but the state didn't arrive here easily, as Rita knows. The debate on this has been substantial in Springfield, and the first year we did this, I think there were only five districts in the entire state that were allowed to pilot this. They had to apply, and then there was feedback from the state, through lots of conversation, and they allowed this to happen, and it's simply, as Pat pointed out, it's really a trade-off in terms of not having to extend the school year into more family vacations, into more summer things, camps, other things that kids, parents already have planned for or with their kids. So, as we always do, we're going to make sure there's a good basis for what we do. We're going to move cautiously, as we have, and we're going to plan appropriately to make it meaningful if we do that, as we're discussing this evening, but we all appreciate your feedback and your expertise, of course.
And we will ensure, you know, your comments help us to be sure that when we're working with our educators to develop those protocols, that it's clear to them that these assignments that they provide on e-learning days can certainly replicate the kind of traditional learning strategies that you referenced. So, thank you.
And just to clarify, one point of clarification. Rita, this is, there's a maximum of four emergency days? Is that, do I recall that? That there's a limit to how many?
Yeah, yeah.
Until what we build into the calendar.
Right.
Yeah, so if we already build two into the calendar, the most we would be expected to use if we had, you know, terrific weather in the winter, there would be two.
Well, let's be clear, hold on a second.
Well.
If there's two emergency days in the calendar, that means up to two days are still covered relative to the state minimum, okay? If it's only after, let's say we close school three times.
Right.
One of those would become an emergency day.
Right, and then we also have, you know, I have the option as a superintendent to look at a grading day at the end of the year, which is not a great alternative either, because, you know, we're, you know, it takes a lot of teacher work away at the end of the year. And what some school districts do, by the positioning of when, you know, winter happens, the next real time that you can do that, as the board knows from our calendar, we don't have many holidays in the calendar, and we do that to maximize the number of days that we've always had in this district, but also to provide some balance to the two semesters since we went to finals before winter holiday. So, the option then becomes spring break, right? And I don't think there's anybody on the planet that would say, okay, we're going to cancel our plans for spring break, and we're going to go three days of school. So, then you do what a lot of the elementarys have to do, and some of the districts that have a hundred and seventy-six days, like Rita says, is they're going the whole next week, their last week, they're going the whole week after that, because they don't have two or three days built in their calendar. So, they have to go a whole nother week at the end of the year. So, all of that is kind of rolled into that, so.
Plus, graduation is fixed, so that's a whole, you know, for every student, you have to, you know, you can't change graduation.
Right.
It's booked, it's, so they can't, you know, graduate and then, well, I guess, graduate and then come back and still go to school for, I mean, it just is, it's pretty complex.
Yeah, right, okay. I'll go over to it. Yes?
I know that a reason that I really benefited from the e-learning day is because I'm in some AP classes, and I know a lot of other people are, and the AP test is on a set date, so we have to have all the material finished by that date, no matter what, even if we aren't in school. So, I need that day to, like, be able to continue learning material, even if I'm not in school.
Mr. Moore, that's.
Very good point, thank you.
All right, so let me just sort of summarize a couple things. All right, I think what we're hearing is, we're glad we have two in the calendar.
Yeah.
We want to make sure we have some in the calendar.
Yeah.
Because we want to make sure in the, you know, rare times we have to close school, for the most part, we're going to still spend the necessary time in school, okay? And so, we don't want this to become, let's say, the next negotiating chip to say, well, we can shorten the school year by getting rid of the two things, right? Is that fair? Is that at least where this board is? We couldn't commit a future board to that, but I think we're here, we're saying, we like the idea, it's well thought out, but very sparingly, hopefully not at all. Anybody object? Yeah?
It's a mother nature.
Yeah, I mean, and we'll see, so we'll see how it goes. I mean, frankly, if we ended up using three of these things, we may want to reconsider whether we had enough, what do we call them?
Emergency days.
Emergency days, yeah, okay. All right. Keep it posted, because you still got a lot of work to do here.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments? All right, therefore, I will declare the hearing closed. We'll move on to the next part, which is to open up the session for public comment on any other topics. Anybody like to speak? Okay. All right, under my report, we'll turn it over to the school programs. I'll let you guys sort out who's going to go first. That will get really well asked.
Abby, you got it? Hi.
Why don't you all start this time, because, yeah, why don't you introduce yourselves? What school are you from? Name, what school you're from, and.
Year in school.
Year in school, and tell us at least one thing we don't know about you, we really want to know.
Okay.
What did you do on your summer vacation somewhere?
I'm Abby Kepf, I'm a senior at Vernon Hills, and over the summer, my favorite thing that I did was travel to Breckenridge, Colorado.
Are we all in the same school, Abby?
Just do your update and then.
Okay.
Congratulations to the Future Business Leaders of America members that competed at Nationals this past summer in San Antonio, Texas. Students had a great job, had a great time competing in test events, giving presentations to judges, and exploring the city of San Antonio, such as visiting the famous Almose Group. Special shout-outs go out to the groups that advanced to the second round of competition. Ben Froman placed ninth in 3D Animation, the team of Julia Lee, Mira Singh, and Ben Thomas placed seventh in Management Information Systems, and the team of Ben Horishenko and Tyler Kading placed third in Sports and Entertainment Management. Construction is continuing at VHS. So far, students haven't noticed too much of an impact, such as potential increased noise levels. However, the courtyard is currently unavailable for students to dine in during lunch showers. One of the main concerns when starting the construction project was that there would be a parking shortage. To combat this, Dr. G. asked for staff volunteers to park across the street at BD. Sixty staff members volunteered to do this, so they were split into two teams. The green team of twenty-five staff members parks across the street every day, and the rest of the staff in the red team park across the street on days with increased traffic. Another change due to construction is that because there is no access to the east side parking lot, sports teams will now access their buses on Linkview. Overall, students and staff have done a great job in adjusting to the changes that the construction project has brought. Over the summer, Mrs. Froman held two Common App and college essay workshops to better prepare seniors who are applying to colleges this year. She helped students set up their accounts, learn how to navigate the Common App website, brainstorm topics for college essays, and she answered any questions that students had. It was very beneficial, and students left feeling more confident that they could handle the tricky process of applying to colleges. VHS has added a school therapy dog named Basil to its learning support team. Basil will be at the school on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Students at VHS have loved when therapy dogs have visited our school in the past, since they can help decrease stress and anxiety levels, and so everyone is very excited that we will have a dog at our school on a more frequent basis now. Our kickoff dance was a huge success this past Saturday. Students had a great time dancing and hanging out with friends, with the main event being the senior lip sync competition. All four groups that competed did a wonderful job, but a special shout-out goes to this year's winning group, Zero Gravity. This year, VHS has offered a new opportunity to students called the Illinois Global Scholar Distinction. Students can attain this distinction by taking eight globally-focused courses from at least two distinctions, engage in at least one globally-focused service learning experience, and experience at least one global collaboration and dialogue opportunity, and complete and pass the Illinois Global Scholar Performance-Based Capstone Assessment, which requires students to choose, investigate, and take action on a global concern. Senior Addison Server says that she is excited to learn global collaborative skills that will better prepare her to thrive in a connected world. VHS has hired seventeen new staff members for this school year, including a new counselor, Mr. Vila, and a new CRC secretary, Ms. Fuentes. Additionally, two of the new hires, Mr. Donato and Mr. Benton, are VHS graduates, so it is great to have them back at the school now as teachers. so it is great to have them back at the school now as teachers. Many teachers have chosen to bring back cell phone holders, commonly referred to as cell hotels, to their classrooms. This is done as a way to prevent students from being distracted while learning. Some teachers have the, have the students put their phones in right away when the bell rings every day, while others choose to use it as more of a punishment if a student is caught using their phone at an inappropriate time. Overall, the cell hotels seem to, do seem to lead to students being more focused while in class.
My name is, my name is Ella Blaker and I'm a senior at Vernon Hills. And this summer I went to Europe with my family. This year, the Peer Tutoring Center and the Academic Resource Center is back with improvements and new features created by the Exec Board in conjunction with Dr. Young. And this year, we have a new app created by Exec Board member Jashika Asher, with assistance and background app work done by computer science teacher, Mr. Lukin. We also have new modern furniture in the ARC conducive for a modern learning space that includes tutoring sessions, group work, or individual study. There will also be professional development sessions for tutors that include leadership training, content-specific workshops, and sessions for self-reflection to identify strengths and weaknesses when tutoring. During teacher development a few weeks ago, a few members of the Exec Board of Peer Tutoring got the chance to speak and present information about the ARC. This was very well received by the staff, so good job to all the students who presented. We'd also like to thank Ms. Schwartz and Ms. Duros for coordinating tutoring sessions and always being able to answer questions in the ARC. The school play, The Old Man and the Moon, was one of the plays performed at Vernon Hills last year and the cast recently auditioned for Theater Fest. They will find out if they made it the week before Thanksgiving, so best of luck to the cast. Auditions for the Fall Musical have concluded and seniors Mackenzie Forla and Sari Gluck have been cast as the leads of the upcoming school musical, Mama Mia, on October 25th, 26th, and November 1st and 2nd. There are 35 people in this incredible cast who are excited to perform Mama Mia for the community and students can't wait to see their friends in this popular musical. For the first year at Vernon Hills, it is optional to take AP Physics 1 instead of a combination of AP Physics 1 and 2 in one school year. Students are thankful for the opportunity to dive into AP Physics 1 and really understand it without stressing about two separate AP exams at the end of the school year. Some students would have opted not to take AP Physics at all this year if AP Physics 1 was not its own class. So this is a very beneficial option for many students who still want AP Science credit. Also, in VHS Art, the memory project portfolios were delivered to Peruvian children. The portraits that VHS students painted and drew for Peruvian children living in extreme urban poverty were delivered. And as shown in the personalized video for our school, the children were very excited to receive their portrait artwork and they were touched by our students' efforts. They fully understand that creating the portraits was a way to show how much others care about their well-being and futures.
Hi, my name's Hala Durazit. And this summer I went to Egypt to visit my family and friends, so that was fun. Okay. This summer, the Vernon Hills Spanish Department took a trip to Costa Rica. A requirement to have completed Spanish 2 or above was in place for this, for this trip. Since a big component of the trip was to help out an elementary school, the students played with and helped the kids. They had also brought donations such as school supplies from Vernon Hills. Students enjoyed this 10-day trip as they got to experience multiple places, with staying at a total of five hotels. The group went ziplining, rafting, and on multiple nature walks. Vernon Hills also took three other trips this summer, including at P L A going to San Antonio, Texas for Nationals, and two educational trips, one to Italy and the other to Ireland. Vernon Hills High School has enacted a new policy that allows students to wear hats in school now. Students have always discussed the hat policy on questions of purpose. Last year, the Scratching Post, our school magazine, even published an article discussing this topic. As the 2019-2020 school year started, a number of students have been seen wearing hats during school. Although the school policy now allows hats, it does state that teachers have the right to set guidelines regarding their own classrooms. Some teachers have requested that students do not wear hats during class as a way to avoid distractions, while other students seem to, other teachers seem to be fine with the new policy. This year, Vernon Hills High School is offering a new course under the name Life. Lifelong Integration of Food and Exercise is a class that combines consumer and gym. One class of life is offered each semester since the class can hold a larger group of students. On Mondays, students meet out as a large group to go over the week's lesson and goals. Then in two small groups, they alternate between two days of gym and two days of foods. The gym portion of this class is led by Mr. Pagani, while the food is shared between Ms. Nardini and Ms. Weiskalver. Goals of this class include learning and developing a health, a healthy lifestyle. This is achieved by learning to cook healthy foods and experiencing different workouts each week. We would like to congratulate the Vernon Hills High School Symphony Orchestra on being selected to represent the state at the Illinois Music Education Conference. The conference is January 29th through 31st at the Civic Center. The IMEC is sponsored by the Illinois Music Educators Association and exists to advocate for universal access to comprehensive music education, deliver exemplary professional development for educators, and provide outstanding musical experiences for all Illinois learners facilitated by licensed music educators. Thank you.
Um, I'm Kat Corliss and I'm a senior at Libertyville High School. Something that I really enjoyed this summer is I was able to go with my church on a mission trip to Corpus Christi for some hurricane relief. So to start us off, we're happy to report that freshman orientation went really well. Lake Crew, our school program that welcomes freshmen, had extremely spirited leaders this year, guiding the freshmen around the school on their, on their tours with different themes, including chefs, dinosaurs, Hawaiian things, and more, to welcome freshmen to the spirited world of Libertyville High School. We're also pleased that we had new student tours led by student ambassadors to help transfer students get a better understanding of the school before they start the school year. In regards with parking, the carpool system that started last year has continued this year and by and large, everybody loves it. Participating seniors came onto campus over the summer to paint their spots with people that are in their carpool. The designs are a fun and creative way for students to personalize their parking spots and we're excited to see how it's helped many other seniors ensure on-campus parking, so if there are just a few who didn't get selected in the lottery. We're thrilled to welcome the new staff members that are joining LHS this school year. We're lucky to have such a talented team of teachers at our school and everybody looks forward to getting to know these teachers better. We're seeing some of them already getting involved more deeply in the school. For example, Mr. Bush is going to be a debate coach this year and the team is really happy to have him. This coming Tuesday, we have open house and NHS and Lake Crew will be sponsoring this event and helping to guide parents around the school if they get lost, welcome through the students' schedules. So parents will be able to go through a typical day at LHS, just very consolidated, and they'll be able to walk through children's schedules and meet their teachers and get a better understanding of what their student's day looks like.
Hi, I'm Jessica Lee. I'm also a senior at Libertyville, Libertyville High School. And this summer I went hiking with my family in Vermont. So in regards to yearbook quotes, there's a lot of turmoil surrounding the elimination of senior yearbook quotes and this is due to an incident involving a hateful yearbook quote in a nearby school. So the LHS yearbook staff has worked in conjunction with Dr. Kay to decide not to include senior yearbook quotes this year. And while many people had a negative immediate reaction to this news, most, most people recognized that this step was taken as a precaution to make sure that people don't feel hurt, disrespected, or unsafe in any way in our school. So the school had a greenout on August 16th to call attention to Green Dot. And Green Dot's a huge hit at LHS and many people showed up wearing all green to highlight their dedication to the fight against interpersonal violence and to show their support for healthy relationships. Life of a Wildcat has been expanding recently to include more students in spreading their message. In the weeks before school started, Dr. Nelson, the Health and Wellness Prevention Coordinator, contacted a group of seniors who expressed interest in promoting the message of Life of a Wildcat. And she has created several committees to lead future Green Dot events, as well as to lead Yellow Ribbon Week events. So Yellow, Yellow Ribbon Week this year is the 2nd of September through the 13th of September, with the first week being about self-care and the second week being about suicide prevention. So there will be visits from therapy dogs, as well as black cat yoga and a lot of other events. And there will also be spirit days to further awareness about mental health.
My name is Mike Gavirloviich and I'm a senior at Libertyville High School. Over the summer, I went to Serbia to visit all my family and friends. So a record number of six students have made the All-State Show of Ayida this year. Ayida is an Egyptian love story with music from Elton John. The students are Rachel Erdman and Albert Sterner as leads, Jason Sekili also in ensemble, Sarah Donna Freo as keyboard two, and Noah Kublenka as first violin. Lastly, Mike Gavirloviich as student assistant director. The Fall Musical of All Shook Up this year has started up and everyone is extremely excited for the show's magic to come together. Jazz Ensemble will be playing at the State, at Illinois Music Education Conference at Peoria Civic Center on January 29th through the 31st. Wind Ensemble has also been invited to perform at the 2020 North Central College Band National Association, also known as the National Band Masters Association Conference at DePaul University. This will be held on February 1st and LHS is one of the, one of two high schools to perform at this conference. For athletes, athletics, all LHS sports have started up and are having amazing practices. The football team has had their first scrimmage on Friday as well and all of those who have attended had a blast. At the end of the school day today, Mr. Woods announced that the new pool is open and the girls' swim is beyond excited to start swimming in their new pool. We want to give a huge congratulations to Ethan Burkhart for placing first at State for track last spring, continuing his long-running winning streak. This past Friday, we had our State March of the Year with the marching band following Ethan throughout the school. It was great to see everyone celebrating a fellow Wildcat's success. Now for last, we have Dr. Kantes to share one more piece of good news.
Um, it's, yeah, definitely good news. And you, as a board, do so much to support our staff and send us such positive messages of the respect you have for our work. But I want to share with you that this past week, one of our staff members was a literal lifesaver in our building. English teacher Karen Lemay Street was teaching her English class. A student was eating an apple. The student began choking on the apple. He stood and made the sign that he couldn't breathe, he began turning pale. And without a moment's hesitation, Karen moved to the student, conducted the Heimlich maneuver, ejected the piece of apple from the student, and quite literally saved the student's life. While that's amazing in itself, what's more amazing is after checking in with the student and making sure he was okay, Karen went back and taught the rest of her classes the rest of the day and acted as if, you know, this is just routine, standard operation when you are a high school English teacher. So we are deeply grateful to Karen's calm, cool demeanor under pressure and her ability to intervene when a student was in jeopardy. I know this is something, you know, that as a board, our staff takes very seriously. Not only do we educate our students, but we're always trying to protect them when they're in our presence. And I just wanted you to be aware of this tremendous effort that was made last week.
Great, great news, yeah. All right, anything else? Fantastic job. Look forward to meeting you guys. Do a great job of helping us understand what's really going on in buildings from your perspective. The rest of this stuff is kind of routine and boring, to be honest with you. So we really appreciate what you're doing. I can just tell by the length and the detail in your reports that it takes a lot of time. And I know you're really, really busy, so really appreciate your, your commitment and dedication to making that happen. So please keep up the great work and bring us all the good stuff, well, just bring us all the stuff.
Stuff.
Okay? Because there were some mixed messages in there, which was really great. I mean, that's, that's exactly what we really want you guys to do. So thank you very much for everything you're doing. Okay?
And as Kat will.
And we'll see you at lunch.
Yeah. And as, as Kat will tell you, the other thing is, once you finish your reports, if you feel it necessary to go, you can exit stage right, okay?
You're welcome to stay or you're welcome to leave. So. But we know how busy you are.
Yeah, don't feel, don't feel.
We would always like you to stay, just to see what's going on, all right? And, you know, you're welcome to, and by the way, if one leaves, some can stay, so, talk to you.
So they just come out of the lobby and they're like, I'm sure.
No, no, you can, I mean, seriously, do whatever you need to do.
Thank you, that's great.
All right. Does that care if you have to do a report on the higher level? Do we train people, that's a matter of routine on those kinds of things?
Yes.
Our, well, most of our campus safety team gets trained in CPR each year and refreshed. But like, we have our school nurse and campus safety team. And then one of the things that we're doing this year as a result with our late starts is our school nurse is doing some basic trainings for things like if a student has a seizure. We've obviously added the Heimlich to the docket for this year. So it is not a standard part of the training, but a lot of our staff get that in different capacities.
Okay, great. All right, let's see. I won't have any other. Yep, superintendent.
Okay, just a few other good pieces of news. First of all, again, we want to make sure that, thank Brian and Dan and Mark and staff at LHS, Steve Mitchell, a couple of other people in the public who worked with us on the pool. So just, it's an amazing, it's an amazing thing and once people see it for the first time, they're going to be wowed. Tom has, as the students reported, LHS has their open house tomorrow night. So they're, seven, Tom, or six tomorrow night?
Uh, seven.
Seven.
Well, let me double check, seven. I want to say seven to 8:30.
6:45 is our limit. Okay.
I'm going to give you the official number. We don't want to get.
You'll need to be there a lot earlier if you're going to. But Tom, Tom will, Tom and his team are going to open the upstairs part of the pool where the seats are. So any of the parents who want to come in and see it tomorrow night will be able to see it.
But no parents are in the pool.
Yeah, no parents in the pool tomorrow.
No open swim for the parents.
Or on the deck.
On, on the deck.
Hopefully. So anyway, thanks again to everyone for their work on that. District 128 is pleased to share recent recognition received from niche.com and US News and World Report. In the 2020 rankings of US and Illinois high schools, niche.com rankings for D128 and its two high schools, Vernon Hills and Libertyville High Schools. District 128 received an A-plus rating and was ranked the number-two district in the United States and in the state of Illinois, the number-one safest school district in the United States and in Illinois, and the number-three best places to teach in the United States and number-four best teachers in the United States. LHS received an A-plus rating, was ranked number 12 in Illinois and number 65 in the United States. And Vernon Hills High School received an A-plus, ranked number 11 in Illinois and number 60 in America. In recently announced US News and World Report, 2019 Best High Schools Report, schools received the following rankings. LHS was 10th in Illinois, 267th in the nation, and was ranked 168th in the nation in STEM. Vernon Hills is ranked 23rd in Illinois, 443 in the nation, and 119th in the nation in STEM. So congratulations to everyone. Again, we always stop and celebrate these, but these are all predicated on student growth and achievement and that's what makes them special and we never lose sight of that. So congratulations to everyone, John and Tom, both of your teams, all the team at the district office as well and the board. LHS senior Maria Cabadas earned recognition from the We organization for her fundraising efforts. Last spring in LHS, Maria helped to raise over $340 for We Villages. We Villages is an adaptive international development model based on five pillars: education, water, health, food, and opportunity. We partner staff with communities and regional governments to support, teach, and empower people to lift themselves out of poverty through these pillars. And last and the good news for me tonight is we want to recognize board member and board vice president Jim Batson, who has recently been recognized and will be awarded Illinois Association of School Boards and Master School Board Member status again. And Jim, you know, you've been doing this for a long time and you work at that very hard on behalf of you as well as the board as a whole. So on behalf of the administration and the board, we just want to congratulate you for earning that distinction again. Okay, just on the.
Excuse me. Just to clarify, zero hour tomorrow starts at 6:45 and first period, open house, 7:00 PM. And then you don't want to miss the principal's video at 7:28 PM. The principal's welcome video, so. But open house officially would start at 7:00 PM.
So there's nothing I need to know about the video before you do it, right? Just kidding, Tom, just kidding. Okay.
Says the pool is open. We've updated it.
Is it going to be live and have you in the pool?
Yeah, we, we did a last-minute update today, so it's got, the pool is open.
Okay. I guess we better be there, Kat, because, you know, we might have a little mop-up to do. It'll be great, Tom, your stuff is always good, here in John. Okay.
It's going to be a big deal, it sounds like.
It sounds like it's going to be a big, right? Now you can't disappoint us now.
Well, now.
Now we have the problem on, on, you know, at the board meeting, right?
That's right.
So.
It's not like you get into Sunday, it's not.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, national superintendent's report is approval of the FY '20 budget, just as an overview. The board has spent almost five hours in discussing the. The board has spent almost five hours in discussing the 2020 budget, three, three-and-a-half hours in a standalone session in August, just on the budget, and a little over an hour at the budget hearing a couple of weeks ago. So, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Stanley, who'll do a quick overview of that five hours of work and investigation the board has done, and then we will have a recommendation for the board to discuss and vote on. So, Dan, turn it over to you.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello. Dan, this will be shorter than the other ones we've had. Our remote desynced and so I'm going to have a code word. I'm going to do like, kaka, that's the code to go to the next slide. So, just a recap, I guess, for, for those of you who may or may not remember. A few things the district has done over the last several fiscal years is they've abated eighteen point five million in property taxes. That's not collected the amount of property taxes that they could have collected under the law. And so, that, that is, that is real relief that has occurred in the past. The second thing that is often highlighted is reducing the number of district-level positions, resulting in the savings that you see there every year. But the other thing that I wanted to point out is, you know, I try to bring this up and talk to you about it regularly because property tax relief is important and even reminding the board that the board has enacted property tax relief in the past, that due to the nature of the way property tax laws are, continues to have an effect each year and will forever until maybe the laws change or there's a referendum or something like that. But in 2014, the levy was reduced, which lowered the property taxes, but then what it does is essentially, what you do is you lose one year of the CPI increase that you could have gotten. And so, because of that lowerage in that one year, that has now turned into about a million, one point one million each year that the levy is automatically not as high as it could have been had the board not taken this action in 2014. And that continues to have an effect on your finances.
Yeah, that was, that was in the middle of the five years that we did the abatement. So, two years, tax levy increase, and then two years.
So, again, for the purposes of helping the people that weren't here at the time, there was one year where it was essentially a credit on all, but we didn't abate, right? And in order to basically make up for that, we came back and did this actually.
Yeah, the goal for that five years was to keep the property taxes we collected flat for five years, collect the same amount from the fifth year as we did in the first year. So, in order to do that, because the one year was, actually went up a little bit, we made up four or five million down the next year in 2014. And to Dan, to Dan's point, because that levy was reduced, it will have a forever effect on the district in lowering the amount of taxes the board could have taken.
Correct, and then that's just, that's just how the system is set up. And so, essentially, you can take action one year, one year that will have a forever impact. But we try to make sure you're educated and you know that about, it's a really important decision that you make each year, so. So, just wanted to highlight that. So, the expenditure assumptions, we've, we've seen these, we've talked about these, we've added the two-point-four FTE, the salary increases that you see there for the ESP, twelve-month administrators, and then teachers' department soup, the average that's listed there. You know, the context for that is, you know, this is, this is the first year of a three-year contract that we have, that we've negotiated with our teachers' union. And so, there's give and take in all those contracts. And so, this is the first year of that, you'll see different numbers in the years two and three out from that.
Dan, why, why won't we see different numbers in year two and three? What's going to be different than this year?
Well, the biggest reason is the, the structure under which teachers are paid is, is significantly different in the future. And so, it, it accounts for teachers, on average, having much, much longer careers in the district, partially due to tier two, in the, in the pension system where they'll have to work till they're sixty-seven in order to retire, rather than the current system, they can go till sixty or earlier if they've qualified. So, that, that, that's kind of added into there, but essentially, the average, the average teacher compensation increase year-over-year would not be as high as what you'll see here or even what we've probably had in prior years.
So, it was planned between the board and the union negotiating, it was planned that those average raise numbers will be smaller in years two and three, correct?
That's what was negotiated.
Okay, great.
The other thing is medical insurance, so we have a, a big decrease in that. Now, the biggest reason for that is the current plan we were on was discontinued by not having the insurance pool that we're in. That was not something we wanted or chose to do, that was something we were kind of forced into. So, that had a significant change on our medical insurance costs. But on the flip side, there was an increase in the family dental to kind of try to offset some of that change. And so, those dollar amounts are represented there. And another new thing this year that we're really excited about, that we're still working the kinks out, there's a number of people that have already hit this match and have their five hundred bucks now. So, we're really excited about that as matching a dollar for a dollar for every, for every employee that works here. Yeah, so that's on the expenditure side. On the revenue side, what is built into there is the CPI increase for 2019, which is a one point nine percent. A big assumption that's in there is lower interest income. So, you know, rates are going down, if, I don't know if you paid attention to the marketplace, rates are coming down. So, that means you're not going to get as much of a return on the chunk of money you have, but also because we're doing these wonderful projects, like finishing the pool, doing the construction here, there's less cash now to invest, and so you'll have less, less in that way. And so, we've adjusted that, I've even adjusted it down from where you've seen, was it two weeks ago that we were here talking about it? So, another thing that kind of counterbalanced that was CPRT, corporate personal property inta, uh, corporate personal property replacement taxes. There used to be a tax in the seventies that was on, we have real estate tax, which is right on the property in the building, but then there was a, there was a personal property tax on all the stuff in the building. That was discontinued in the seventies and there is now a tax that was replaced, replacement tax, that was put into place that we get from the state. That amount, we got official word from the state, that's going to go up next year by about one hundred fifty thousand, so I've adjusted that, because otherwise, I would have come in over budget on revenue for that and that wouldn't be good. So, that's the core of the revenue assumptions that are really in there, otherwise, everything is pretty much as you would expect. The one thing that feeds into kind of a weirdness that I'll talk about, essentially, our surplus this year is overstated. And it's overstated really for one simple reason, is this is the way we get breakdown from property taxes. So, the way we get property taxes, and for those of you who live in Illinois, you have to get a schedule that kind of pay your property taxes on if you choose that schedule. We usually, historically, how many, how much property taxes we get before June and then we get the rest after June, like July and then the big one in September. Well, if you can see the history here, you're back to 2014, we got, call it fifty-one percent. 2015, a little more than fifty-one percent there. 2016 was a little bit more, so we're kind of trending, getting a little bit more earlier. And then 2017 with a huge, huge jump. Anyone remember what that was? I've asked you this every meeting, so. Right, prepayments, right, there was federal change in the, in the federal taxes and so a lot of people decided to prepay their taxes to comply or to, you know, try to make that work for themselves. That was an outlier. So, we know that that is, that, that's an outlier, so we're removing that from the equation. Had we removed all the prepaid taxes that we got, we would have been right in line with probably fifty-one, fifty-one and a half percent. But then something happened this June, we only got forty-nine percent, right? And I know we're only talking about a one to two percentage points, but that results in like one point three million dollars that we didn't get in June that I thought we were going to get, that we've historically shown we're going to get, we didn't get it. And no one really knew that we weren't going to get this. Until you get to the end of June and count all the money that you got for that month and oh, we're down some. So, essentially, all that means, that doesn't mean we're not going to get the money, that just means we're getting it in July, which is our new fiscal year. And so, that is one point three million dollars that now we are going to be getting in fiscal year 20 that really we should have gotten in June, but I can't control when the county distributes the money. So, that, that is a huge impact on what our surplus is for this year. So, if you look at all our total budget for the entire district, all funds, all departments, all buildings, everything, revenue at ninety million, call it ninety-one million, expenditures at just under one hundred and fifteen million. Now, that is a huge deficit, right? Twenty-four million dollar deficit, but wait, that's because we're doing all these wonderful projects, we're paying cash for them. So, that's going to be reflective of that. So, you need to really remove all those projects out of the equation and go to what I call operating, our operating expenditures, our operating funds, to get a true idea of, of what the district is costing on an annual basis. So, this year, our revenue's at ninety-one million, expenditures eighty-six point six thou, uh, million, with a surplus of four point three million, which is higher than we would have anticipated. But the biggest reason is because it's overstated by one point three million because of the timing of the property taxes. So, in a nutshell, this represents, the three point three is roughly the increase in the expenditures over the previous year, which takes into account the raises, the building costs, and all the different departments and everything that's going on. So, what's next? Budgeted option, we have that recommended, recommended for approval tonight. And then after that is tax levy discussions to really begin in September, and more October is really when it would hit in force to really talk about that, that process. So, with that, that's the information we have for our fiscal year 20 budget. Any questions? Thank you.
So, and just one question, so where, where will this be posted on the website or will it be posted on the website?
Where will what be posted?
This present page. On the resident, I want to know what's going on the budget, because this is a good summary.
We've had the budget, we've had the budget posted.
On our website? All ninety-two pages of it.
Well, that one is only thirty pages.
But this is a really good summary, right?
So, can we post this?
You're fine, you're fine.
So, Dan, can we post this with the budget?
Uh, we might be able to. I have not created this with the eye of making an ADA accessible for our website, so I want to, I'll have to do that, but we absolutely can make this available on our website.
Okay, and if we could, if we can make it available on the website or anybody that doesn't know what they're doing can find it? Because I know sometimes we dig these things, you usually got to go find Board of Education and then you got to find something else and usually like three or four clicks later you finally find, so.
Yeah, there's just, I think at the end of the day, there's just a lot of stuff that we post on our website that we have to and so it's hard to kind of organize it.
Let's think about it, because we still get feedback that people don't know and, and your first slide there summarizes a lot of good things. The other slides, I think, give a very high-level, good summary of the budget and all the discussions we've had on this. The only thing I would change on the presentation is to spell out CPRT. So, people know what it is.
I just.
You spoke about CPRT.
Oh, define it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad you know what CPRT, but I have to listen to you every time you say it, because I don't have to get, you know. We had a question and they said, what is CPRT? I don't think I saw it.
Can we put a link on like the home?
Well, let's just think about, I think we got, yeah, that's something, how do you get on the landing page? First thing is the plastic budget, budget, budget.
We'll figure that out.
Well, and the reason for highlighting particularly CPRT here is because that has changed since the meeting we had two weeks ago.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the whole presentation. It's, it's a good presentation for the average resident to see, read and, you know, it's really, it's well done. And I think we should share.
Okay, we'll, we'll figure that out.
Share in a way that anybody that doesn't usually go to the website can figure it out, because it can be true. All right, so what, I would like to compliment you on all your hard work for our budget discussions. It was five hours, it seemed like fifty.
Yeah.
But, but I honestly, I honestly believe that, you know, every year, we're getting better and better at this and at least in the however many years I've been here, which is a few, this was the clearest gift for me, okay? I felt very comfortable knowing where we're at. I, I felt like things were very transparent. I think you're still digging into a lot of good things. Like I told you, I've heard from at least one staff member how much what you're doing to clean up the accounts and do all that is helping them do their business. So, there's a lot of good things going on there and I think you deserve a lot of the credit for that. So, I just want to say thanks for all your hard effort there. It makes a difference, big difference.
Pat, one of.
Gives us the opportunity to ask a lot of questions, maybe you don't want to ask, but that's the way it should be, okay?
Well, two comments again, I mean, the years that I've been fortunate to work with the board, we've spent every year at least five hours on the budget. And the board has certainly in the past and certainly this year has done its due diligence again. If you attend those meetings, they're very detailed and they're very back and forth and they're very challenging. And that is the role the board should play and that we should play in looking at using taxpayer dollars. So, I want to assure the public again that we have those meetings, they're working meetings, they're deep, complex, detailed over time. So, you know, the board certainly does its due diligence on the budget. A couple of other things that we talked about coming out of the last meeting is, the board asked us, based on our recommendation, to take a look at reconfiguring learning spaces at our two buildings. So, discussions and initial conversations about what that might look like are ongoing and brought back and we had, we've talked about making sure that we continue to do what we have done pretty religiously over the last probably fifteen years back in terms of normal capital, routine things like, you know, a twenty-year cycle on a roof and making sure we're on top of that. And then the other thing we mentioned as a larger capital project is to do some investigation of the existing fieldhouse at Libertyville, which is old and has had some spotty repair done to it over the years that's starting to, you know, show its age. So, we can do some work on that too and then the board can take a look at that as part of our overall conversation that guaranteeing any of those things will be done, but we would have the ability to have that information in the board to make some recommendations on the board to where we might proceed.
Okay. Just a couple questions on that. Is the fieldhouse something that's worth touring to see what's going on there? I don't know that I've ever toured it or not.
Right. What do you think?
I mean, would it, would it reveal the, the shape of the fieldhouse and make an impression as well? Because the more, I mentioned this to Tom this afternoon or tonight when I came in and it seems like every time I bring this up, it sounds like something we need to serious.
I think it might be useful at our next meeting, we can scroll up at the rebuild table.
But if it would, if it would highlight really something deficiencies, I think it's worth doing.
One part that will be a little bit difficult is, one of the biggest issues is the roof that's there, that would be hard to look from the inside. And then also, what you would notice is the lack of the HVAC really in the space that is something.
And the roof is structural issues, right? It's not just a membrane.
Yes, it's, it's an original Butler building, sorry. An original, they call it a Butler building, it's a brand, which had a metal roof, as you see, for example, like a barn, you know, farmers' buildings. And a roof was put on top of that, you know, to extend the light because that was leaking. So, now we have to look at a rebuilding cycle to remove all of it and start over.
Okay, and then, I mean, I know when we've talked about this before, we, from a timing perspective, it's not something we're going to start ripping that roof off and doing all that kind of stuff during the school year, all right? I guess what I would challenge us to do though is, there's a lot of, you know, design work and all that kind of good stuff that, I guess, that's what I would actually challenge us to figure out, if this is something we need to do, is there anything we can do to accelerate that? And we don't have to answer, I'm not looking for an answer today, but I'm.
No, no, I mean, we're, we're aware, we're certainly aware of that. I mean, we've been kind of intentional on trying to time out some of these things.
There's so much going on.
We're finishing up the, the pool, getting these other projects going and really, our timeline has been, once the school year starts to really sit down and start looking at that, particularly at LHS, we have a meeting this week.
Thursday.
Thursday. With the design team.
I mean, that's, I, I would ask that we do as much as we can on, on both of those projects, right? We may be in a position where we can consider doing some of that and we know from history that the longer we wait, they only get more expensive. So, if you convince us that the fieldhouse thing is inevitable, when we start getting into, there's no time better than the present, right? Because we're not making any money on the reserves these days, right? And that's not looking any, any better.
You still earn just not as much as you probably did last year.
Yeah, but it's a pretty small number. In terms of percentage return on those things?
Two percent.
Okay. Guaranteed construction costs are going up more than two percent. When you have four percent unemployment, three percent, four percent unemployment, I guarantee construction costs are going up a lot more than two percent.
Everything's March, that's it.
Okay, all right, so again, a lot of good, exciting things going on.
So, Pat, with that said, we, the administration, would recommend the approval of the FY20 budget.
Okay, is there a particular, is there a specific motion with an amount needed that we need to hear?
As, as presented.
Test presented, and it's really, it needs to be documented, that's the last part. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020 budget as presented?
I move to adopt the FY2020 budget as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Ludsta.
Aye.
Rudy.
And just one reminder, this is one of those things that every single board member has to sign the cover page for the budget, so we have three originals that every single one of you need to sign before you leave here tonight.
But we'll see, don't dare leave without signing. We've had that problem. We will.
We'll have to call you in the parking lot.
We will, thank you.
All right, next up on the superintendent's report is resolution for e-Learning Days, and the administration is recommending the approval of our e-Learning Days plan. As presented earlier, we had the required publicary on that with no additional questions. So Rita, is there anything else you want to say here?
Appreciate the board's approval of our plan.
All right, is there a motion to approve the e-Learning Plan?
So the question is the same here, do we have to read this whole?
Well, you got a whole resolution.
Resolution, references. Say the resolution as presented.
Yes.
As presented.
I move that District 128 adopts the e-Learning Program district-wide as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Maria, thanks for your work on that as well. LHS Pool Parking Update. Yeah, of course it is the team, but the team needs leadership, so great job. LHS Pool Parking Update, I think, you know, unless you have other questions, we're pretty solid on both of those areas right now, we're addressed tonight. LHS VHH's additions and renovations update. If there's no tangible update and work's continuing on the projects at this point, if there's something kind of exciting and new, and John, you know, went out and actually put a cornerstone down today, that would be exciting, but.
Yeah, no, when you get a chance, if you drive, drive by in the daylight, there's a lot of structure going up on the east side of the building, so there's a lot of progress, so, you know, you'll be surprised and pleased with the progress that's gone on so far.
All the rain today probably was interesting.
They happened a little bit, but we had, we were ready to spring, so.
Had a whole lot of dust down around the construction site.
Not so much of a dust, no. I'd like to say thank you to the board and, and all the members on the team for the pool. Everybody put a lot of work, we overcame a lot of obstacles along, along the process, and I played a small part in it, of a large team, and I thank you for your support. And I just want to say one thing, I, I just wish the board could have been there, as well as everybody that participated in today. I went up and I stood up in the bleachers and watched all the kids, and you could hear them giggling, and, you know, just the excitement before they jumped to the pool. It was, it was very gratifying to see that, you know. I wish everybody could have experienced it. The, the film doesn't do it justice, and I know the people that were there, it was a fantastic moment.
Imagine that as your high school, one of your high school memories, right? You were the first group of kids, you got to jump in that first time in the pool, that's pretty amazing, so.
That probably won't happen for a while, again.
Yeah.
Not here.
Probably in a while, yeah, not here, but probably in a while.
So one, one other piece of history, one other piece of history that I don't know, you two guys may remember this, but once upon a time, when we were starting conversations on all these capital projects, there was a, a pretty serious conversation, I know Alex was a big advocate of adding another person to the facility staff to be our eyes and ears on all these projects. That never happened. He showed it all that himself, so I, I want to make sure that doesn't go without note, because that was, at the time, there was a pretty serious argument that we gotta add another person, we have too many things going on, one person can't do it all. One person's been doing a pretty good job. That one person would kind of say, yeah, we're getting a little bit of days.
Hasn't only been me, it's been.
Well, the whole team, I agree with that.
The whole team in the office.
Well, you've clearly done it now, having a dedicated person that would walk, run around all day and just kind of keep an eye on the contractors and stuff from, from a D-128 perspective. So we appreciate all the hard work that's going on, okay? But it's clear that a lot of teamwork down the table, and certainly more to come. Dr. Gilli is beginning to appreciate what he's been going through. There's two real quick questions on the pool, though. One, I always forget to answer this question, will there be public access to the pool?
Just like the old pool.
I just don't, I don't remember what it is. I just don't remember what that was, to be honest.
Yeah, so there's a.
I get two questions, that's one.
There's a few programs that are offered to our public swim, public swim every Sunday.
But that public swim, meaning anybody from the public can come in and swim?
From the public who come, it's very low cost for them to, we also have a master swim program at Libertyville. They swim between both schools, so between Libertyville and Vernon Hills. There's learn and swim programs throughout the year and in summer. There's Katz Aquatics that we work with, that is open to the public. And again, they swim at both pools. There's a diving program at Vernon Hills that's offering to the public. So there's quite, Special Olympics utilizes the pool each week, so there's a lot of time, I think.
So is it really, yes, and it's the same as it was, I just couldn't.
And the public can find all that information on the websites for both Vernon Hills and Libertyville, under athletics, and there's an aquatics page that lists all of the available.
All right, because that's one question that I think I've kind of had. The other one, which I want to make sure we all have the right, the same answer to, is why didn't you put windows in? And I honestly forgot, I, I thought there was some technical reasons, so I did talk to Tom about this earlier today. And it's important to be able to respond to this one correctly, because most people think we just didn't want to spend the money. That wasn't the issue, okay? It was a technical issue, and that with windows, there would be too much glare on the water, and that is from both a safety perspective and, you know, a variety of other perspectives, undesirable, and so the coaches really wanted it the way it is, okay? And I think that's important for all of us to know, because I will admit, as you.
So the safety piece, what happens, when you're outside, obviously you have the sun covering the whole pool, and so the, the reflection of the pool is the same. When you're inside and you have windows, you have dark spots and light spots, and those create spots in the pool where you can't see somebody that's at the bottom of the pool. And so if you have those windows, a lot of schools, what they've done is gone and either covered the windows up or shaded them, and so one of the things we wanted to make sure, and, and, you know, is to make it safe for everybody, and so by not putting windows in, it's a safe environment. So like today, when they swim in it with the lights on, you can see all the way to the bottom, and you can see the kids that are in the pool.
Okay, all right, I just know that questions have come out, rather than mumble through it, I thought we'd get there.
And really, even if you may or may not recall the gym that's getting built, there's not really windows on that top part either, so for similar reasons, not that there's a pool in there, but similar reasons in terms of the glare and everything.
Okay, great. Sorry to drag on, I just want to show a quick.
That shows a good point, Pat.
Okay, okay, we have FOIA requests, we had six FOIA requests since we met last time. So we had a FOIA request received on 7/17/2019. The response deadline was 7/24/2019. The quester was James St. Paul, Business Representative and Organizer for Chicago Regional Council Parkers, local 1185 floor covering in Lisle, and requested a list of all contractors awarded bids for construction being done at Libertyville and Vernon Hills High Schools under the construction management of Gilbane. This project is commonly known as a capital work plan. Follow-up was done by Dan, responded on 7/22/2019. Dan spent approximately 10 minutes on that. FOIA request was received on 7/25/2019. Response deadline was 8/1/2019. The quester was Vince Espinoza, Manager for Local Labs, Publishers of Prairie State Wire. Requested copies of any current collective bargaining agreements between your organization and any organized labor collective bargaining unit, and if there is no collective bargaining agreement in place, a copy of the last expired agreement. Additionally, we are requesting electronic, preferably non-PDF, such as CSV, Excel, or text data, with the following data points for all employees represented or not by any organized labor collective bargaining unit: first name, middle name, or initial last name, employment email address, start date, department, job title, compensation, compensation type, full-time, part-time, hourly, organized labor collective bargaining unit name if applicable. Follow-up was done by Brian Kelly on 7/30/2019, approximately 12 minutes. Request was received on 7/31/2019. Response deadline 8/7/2019. Five-day extension deadline 8/14/2019. The quester was Joseph J. Henderson and son, on Grand Avenue in Gurnee. Requested all, number one, all bonds, payment, performance, public or other, posted or obtained with regard to the construction of Libertyville High School Aquatics Center. Of course, there were no bonds issued. All contracts awarded to or otherwise entered into with Gilbane Building Company from July 31, 2016 to July 31, 2019, including the contract for construction or construction management of Libertyville High School Aquatics Center. Any bond or letter of credit posted with or obtained by the District of Gilbane Building Company or Assurity on its behalf relating to construction of the project from January 1, 2016 to July 31, 2019. Follow-up was done by Dan Stanley, responded on 8/14/2019. Time spent on the request approximately four hours. FOIA request received on 8/2/2019. Response deadline was 8/9/2019. The quester was Tanner F., Tanner@K12TransportationResearch.com. Requested all special needs transportation contracts, which covered 2019, 2020 school year for CHSD 128, and includes the estimated annual contract value. Follow-up was done by Dan Stanley on 8/6/2019. Time spent was approximately 10 minutes. FOIA request received on 8/2/2019. Response deadline 8/9/2019. Five-day extension deadline was 8/16/2019. The quester was Matthew McNeil, on US Highway 45 at Libertyville. Requested, excuse me, MMcNeil@IVEW150.com. Requested all invoices and certified payroll for all affiliated Customer Services Incorporated for the period June 2001, 2018, the present. Follow-up was done by Dan Stanley on 8/16/2019, approximately two hours. The last FOIA this month was received on 8/19/2019. Response deadline was 8/26/2019. The quester was Keith F. Galloway from DRG Holding LLC in Coventry, Rhode Island. The information requested was transportation contracts with your current transportation vendor. Follow-up was done by Dan Stanley, responded on 8/20/2019. Time spent, a few minutes. So again, it just underscores if you added the time Dan spent. Yeah, I mean, so, you know.
They are, but you also need to know Carol is just as involved in responding to it, too, in keeping us organized, because there was lots that I remember having a month of doing, and so that is incredible, Carol helping, keeping us on track, making sure we have what we need.
So the bigger point again, of course, you know, we need to respond to these under Freedom of Information Act, but we want the board and community to be aware of that in the months like this month. You know, you've got 68 hours tied up just doing FOIA requests, and we're trying to get things built, and swimming pool, and a budget approved, and all kinds of, Brian's trying to get people hired, and all of those kinds of things, so, anyway. And Pat, believe it or not, that can be just superintendent's report.
All right, great. Lots of good news going on. Okay, next, the consent vote agenda, we reviewed it two weeks ago in committee, like a consensus for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed.
I motion to approve the consent vote agenda, agenda as listed.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Facilities and Finance Committee Chairperson Huber.
All right, we're gonna go ahead, and I'm gonna throw it right over to Dan, you want to talk about, A, the District Copy Paper Purchasing Contract?
Uh, yeah, that's as was presented in the committee, that's using the state contract to purchase the paper.
Nothing new?
No.
All right, any questions on that for Dan? Now, you want us to approve that contract as presented, yes? Take away this, motion, please.
I move that we approve the contract with this one paper for copy paper, $32,842 and cents.
Second.
Questions, I'll say aye. She's gotta call it, go ahead and call it, Carol.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
All right, moving on to B, the Vernon Hills High School Health and Vending Contract, that was also in our materials. Any further?
This was new from our committee, so at the time, we had the committee, so Vernon Hills looking at adding a healthy vendor. Due to the nature of this contract, that it will end up perhaps generating more than $1,000 of revenue for the, for the building, the board by law has to approve that contract, and so that's what's presented here for your approval. The terms are pretty straightforward for the.
Is this a different vendor that we have today?
Yeah, it is.
And we don't have any existing obligations with the current vendor?
We do that.
Are we outside the trial period, and how there was a trial period in there? Are we in that trial period right now, or are we outside it? It's like there was like this trial period, or is he at a party, could say, anyone, so are we still in that period right now?
Yeah, my guess is we're in it, but I.
I don't know, I'm not sure, but, well, your contract isn't, isn't in place until you approve it, so.
Are the machines here, though?
I don't know.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good.
So this'll make it permanent, I guess, you know, for the length of the contract, right?
All right, can we have a motion to approve the Health and Vending Contract as presented?
Move to approve the Health and Vending Contract as presented.
Second. Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye. All right, item C, disposal request, ready, athletic department chairs. Dan, will you get rid of those?
Yeah, those are the ones that, sorry, this came in again after our committee, I believe these are the chairs that were replaced, that were with the.
The condell?
Condell, yeah.
The condell ones here?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're here, and, yeah.
Pass chairs over.
We're gonna sit in with the committee.
What are we, what are we doing with the chairs, the disposal request?
Those ones, disposing, so they'll either, they'll either try to donate, or just throw them away, depending on the condition.
All right, so what do we have to, I mean, that seems like a management action.
It normally, if, if it has, if it has a diminutive value, then the board doesn't need to have approval, we can just throw it away, but our general practice is, if there's even probably more than a diminutive value, that we bring this forward. Usually it's not consent, like, because we have an F and F, it's a consent, this just key.
It's on the consent vote agenda, we talk about it, we pass it as part of the consent vote agenda, this is being pulled out because it just.
Yeah, because it came afterwards, yeah.
Okay. Who's got disposal of the athletic department?
Uh, yeah, our P and G.
Okay, because I mean, I, we just need to be careful on the motion in terms of how exactly we want the motion to.
Disprove the disposal of the LHS Athletic Chairs.
As presented?
Yeah.
I move to approve the request to dispose of equipment as presented.
Second.
All right, questions, no?
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
All right, anything else on finance, uh, any members of the board have?
I could pump a chuckle when we said the perfect chair, because as I left LHS the other day, I saw the perfect chair still sitting there. Right from the auditorium days?
Yeah.
So, it was in there for a more purpose?
Those are nice.
They are nice.
Say anything else that you need to get through us on that?
We had the big thing, and it's still there reminding us that there was another secret.
All right, we are done. Financial.
Program personnel, Chairperson Batson.
Thank you, Dr. Rooney, first up on the, uh, P and P is the, um, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Cats Aquatics Agreement.
Associate Superintendent Brian Kelly.
This agreement, uh, came in after the P and P meeting, um, so, uh, Brian McDonald, John Woods, Dr. Cats Aquatics, we've reviewed it, made a couple minor, you know, changes here and there, reviewed it. Um, we just, you know, had some good discussions with Cats Aquatics, um, obviously, we'll review it again now that LHS pool, we get through this year, and so we can look at next year for the Cats Aquatics Agreement, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, but, everything has been going smoothly with Cats Aquatics, and, um, Brian and John both have a good partnership with, um, their aquatic director, so my recommendation is to sign the agreement again for another year.
Do you have a, uh, motion to approve the, uh, agreement?
I motion to approve the Cats Aquatic Agreement as presented.
Second.
Any further questions, comments?
No, actually, I do have a question, um, in regards to lifeguarding, because we had, you know, some members of, that are part of this talked us about concern particularly LHS, and that also is particularly because the pool's now so big about it. So I just wondered, that doesn't seem to be, like, who's responsible for.
So, um, so Cats Aquatics, when they're in there, they're, need to make sure that they do have lifeguards, and then for our programs, that is under the umbrella of, um, of the district, we need to make sure that we have lifeguards, so the difficulty, and we're, um, actually, um, now that we're back in session, um, we're gonna have a discussion, I think, with both aquatic directors, athletic directors, um, how can we, uh, better recruit lifeguards? So, the, the, the problem right now finding lifeguards is that some of these programs will be an hour or two in length, so to bring a student that wants to work for only an hour or two, um, that's hard, you know, they're so busy, and, and again, the ones that are lifeguards generally are water polo players, swimmers, but it might be another sport, so they're busy as it is, and to say, hey, we've got a program at night, and we need you to come in for two hours, and you're gonna get paid for two hours of work from work, and you're trying to get your check, because you only worked two hours this week, and after taxes, it's so hard. So, we need to really look at the recruiting that we're doing from our own students, um, we've tried to hire adults in the past, but again, that's difficult. But if you add up all the hours of all the programs, you might be able to get, you know, an adult in there, unemployment's so low, so yes, it's a struggle, so we're, um, actually gonna sit down and hopefully the next week, we'll do with aquatic directors, athletic directors, maybe involve our lifeguard teachers at both those, how we can better recruit lifeguards that cover all of our programs. So, it includes all of our programs that we're, we have to have lifeguards at, so Special Olympics, master swimming, and Cats Aquatics, and so you start adding them up there, you know. So, and then like during the PE classes during the day, we do have, um, teachers in there, we also have an aide that is, um, lifeguard certified, and then if there's times during the day that maybe the aide isn't available in the pool, we could have one of the students during their PE class also act as a lifeguard, and so, so yes, it's, it's a challenge, yes.
I've never thought about it, but she brought it up. And is there a, you know, if they don't have that, a lifeguard, they have to not have them?
Yeah, you're not supposed to have the program going if there's not a lifeguard.
Right, the only question I had is, it was interesting, and I haven't seen that agreement in a while, um, the annual cost for the pool is about the same as a one-day meet.
Correct.
If I read it correctly, so, my reason, that's a pretty, that seems like a pretty good deal for the Cats.
Let me, let me just go over background again.
Yeah.
Uh, if you don't remember all this, because we went through all of this, and Karen, uh, he made it well, too. Cats Aquatics, for about twenty-five years, was actually the district's program. Okay, we hired a lot of people, we did a separation, we had a, a rough patch with an executive, uh, head swim coach in that program that we were not happy with. Uh, and we ended up, uh, letting that person go, um, and Steve Mitchell, who some of you have met with the pool, where Steve and I, when I was in Bryant's school, um, actually put our relationship back together, and we just said, we made a joint decision at that point, the Cats would still be an associated group with the school district that would get preferred status so it can continue to operate, right? Because that's what we founded it for in the first, uh, place, uh, but they would have, uh, or they would have their own board, they would hire their coach, you know, et cetera, and if that coach was great, that was good, if the coach wasn't great, you know, that was an issue they had to deal with, uh, moving forward. So, the terms that we have are essentially, um, mirror what we put together fifteen years ago. Uh, and financially, for them to survive, to be able to have a program and, uh, serve swimming and diving in our two communities at the level that we do, um, we have to keep the rates flat, uh, where they're at, so that's how that has evolved.
How many kids are in the program, roughly? Just round numbers?
Just, uh, I just got the braster a little bit ago, it's a couple hundred though, total, when you.
So it's not really a big money thing for them?
No.
Well, uh, what, so what I'm saying, if you take two thousand bucks, you divide it by two hundred kids, it's ten bucks a kid to have a pool for the whole season. So, I'm not suggesting we change it, I'm just, I would just say it should be on the radar screen, it's something we want to understand, because at some point, we might be in a position where we're looking to save money somewhere, and maybe this is one where we're subsidizing something that maybe we either shouldn't or don't have to.
Yeah, can, let me just kind of, I think, because I can talk, not specifically about this one, but really about the district, because I'm part of the J-Cats basketball program, so what they do for the basketball is, it's very similar, they, they charge you five hundred dollars, very small, because, so we can operate.
Yeah.
And not charge the kids, you know, they were paying, I don't know how much aquatics paid, but I could pay five hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah.
And so even ten dollars, five seventy, that becomes, you know, they're paying a lot of money. We do charge, the high school does charge us a lot more when we have our tournaments, so we cover the cost of security.
Yeah.
In fact, we overpay for security, because they're already there, they're a fixed cost, but we pick up that cost. So I, I think at the end of the day, if you look at all the programs, if we started treating aquatics harder, I, I, again, I don't know, but I can, I can speak, speak from experience, I think that the high school's so generous with the community, the programs, I think that it's just really.
And again, if you put on funds, that.
Oh, yeah.
My head keeps going about three or four years down the road on money, and, and where would we be able to either find money or cut money? These kind of things I've been looking at, because, to your point, if they're charging five hundred bucks a kid, and twenty bucks of that's covering the pool for the year, there's four hundred and eighty bucks going to someplace other than the district.
That's a lot. Coach's liability.
I get it.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, what's one of the most important parts of having such a program, the pool?
Well, here, here's the thing, I think, with Cats Aquatics, we, we would still have the program. The program would be ours, we would be paying for all of this, we would be getting nothing, all right, except for a very small fee from people, and that, we, we've kept that relationship, so it is still like our program, we have an associated relationship, so we can have a very strong swimming program, and honestly.
And it's a great program.
Well, and hon, and honestly, this is an important point, our most used facilities in the district, you could argue are our two swimming pools, because we have those facilities open from five-thirty in the morning until nine or nine-thirty at night, as you guys see when we leave, uh, meetings often, and they're used on Saturdays and a half a day on Sunday. So the value add of having those two swimming pools in the district, and having everything from little kids learn to swim, to senior citizens and senior swim, being able to come in those swimming pools is, is valuable, and I understand completely what you're saying, Pat, I just think that when we went through, even at our rentals program, to Kevin's point, you know, that who we have relationships with, like kind of governmental or associate groups, um, we ensure that we do treat them differently than outside groups, um, if they have swim meets, they have to pay money, they host a meet, they do security, all of that. I think we would want to be very careful, um, because those are some of the most passionate supporters of the district, um, and they're also good users of the district, um, that are also paying us big taxes, too, so, and get your point, get your whole point, Phil.
Okay.
Okay.
It was, it was, at the, at the end of the day, it's a wonderful relationship, it's a great program, and it's also a really good deal for Cats Aquatics, so it's kind of relevant.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we've had a motion in a second, uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, our second item on, uh, P and P is, uh, employment of employees, so there's a list, it's that time of year, we're starting the school year, and uh, there's a list of, uh, additions we, uh, that we weren't able to discuss earlier in the, uh, the month, so we have them separated here. Any, uh, questions or comments on the, the, uh, motion? A second.
I move the employment of employees as presented.
Second.
Okay, any questions on the board? Okay, roll call, please.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye. Uh, and lastly, on the, uh, program personnel committee, uh, report here is the board policies, there's a group of, uh, six, uh, seven, uh, policies here, this is, is for the second reading and adoption, it's been thoroughly reviewed both in committee and also, uh, reviewed last month at the board meeting. Uh, Brian, no changes since they were presented before, so no adjustments to that, so they're basically just a, uh, final review of the, uh, the policies we've reviewed in the past. So can we have a motion, a second?
Move to, uh, approve the board policies, uh, their adoption, um, that are listed in our packet that we reviewed in committee, and, uh, the location at the first reading, now this is the second.
Second.
Okay, thank you, any questions or comments on any of these, I think we've all been through these, so, can we have a roll call, please?
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Aye. Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
And anything under other that anyone has? Okay, that concludes the program personnel.
Okay, no C, don't know why it's B, so, uh, we're gonna move into executive session, um, the topic this evening, employment of employees by LSCS one-twenty slash two seat one, can I have a motion to move to.
So move.
Second.
Um, Batson.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, again, other than to take action to return to open session, there's no, there will be no further action following the executive session, okay?